I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of August 1, 2017. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Moats?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Here.
As there are no proclamations this evening, the first item on our agenda will be the public comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for public comment?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the agenda. Unless this, unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form. And Madam Mayor, I have five requests to speak. Thank you.
Elizabeth Schneider, followed by Chuck Flax, followed by Ann Kremorosa.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Elizabeth Schneider. On Mother's Day, I read the beautiful and compelling Mother's Day opinion piece entitled "Motherhood and Net Zero," written by San Luis Obispo Mayor Heidi Harmon in The Tribune. In the piece, Mayor Harmon speaks about her children and her responsibility to them and all the residents of San Luis Obispo County to protect their health and well-being, their water and air quality, and their property from the very real effects of climate change. Mayor Harmon supports a vision of 100% clean and renewable energy for San Luis Obispo, and the city has already adopted a climate action plan. The next day, I sent a single question by email to you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. What is the plan for Santa Maria to transition to 100% renewable energy? After several weeks, I got a response from Mr. Hayden, listing a few ways the city is saving energy by, like changing light bulbs in city buildings, converting some of the city vehicles to hybrids, installing automated environmental controls in buildings, and a few other very minor efforts to reduce the city's carbon footprint. I do applaud the use of the methane gas released by the landfill to co-power Marion Hospital and plans to do the same at the city's wastewater treatment plant to reduce methane emissions into the air we all breathe. Little baby steps like these are not sufficient responses to curb emissions in the city of Santa Maria. Climate change science is real, not an alternative fact. As the decision-making body of our city, you hold the responsibility of protecting its residents not just from crime, but also from poor air quality and polluted water. The health of the residents of Santa Maria rests in your hands. Now is the time to seriously discuss the potential effects of climate change on Santa Maria. You are responsible for developing a climate action plan for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Flax, followed by Ann Kremorosa, followed by Tony Coles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Chuck Flax with the Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness, or C-3-H, which two of you are members of our policy council. And the reason why I'm here early, we're doing a presentation later, is that we are in strong support of an item on consent. It's the, it's number H, the recommendation to adopt a resolution in compliance with the Good Samaritan Shelter application. This is a one-time-only grant program from the state that will fund not just Good Samaritan operations, but a significant amount of homeless outreach programming that's desperately needed for chronically homeless people in Santa Maria. And frankly, there's almost no funding publicly available for this kind of work, other than what you all are going to be going for here at the state. And it's a, it's a one-time grant that the Department of Finance is issuing. It's kind of a unique and special program. And so I applaud how quickly you've moved on this, and we look forward to working with the city staff as it gets implemented. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ann Kremorosa, followed by Tony Coles, followed by Paul Giro.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilmember, city staff, and teeny-tiny group. On behalf of the Santa Maria Business Development Center, I'm here to share with you our facts, our quick facts from the first six months of 2017. And I'm always blown away by our numbers. In the first six months of 2017, our collaborative served over 850 clients, residents of Santa Maria, who would not have had another place to go for business-related services. As you know, we are home to SCORE for Santa Maria. The San Luis chapter comes and works out of our space. They provide consultation services and workshops. Their workshops are on a monthly basis, so they serve about 60 people over the course of a month, I mean, of the six months. And they do consultations with about 27 unduplicated clients. Weave is also part of our collaborative project. They are in our center. They see about 65 clients over the course of six months as they're doing their sign-ups and getting ready for their next round of 14-week Spanish-language training session, which we probably will be starting to host in our facility since our training room is finally in place. I personally work with over 40 microentrepreneurs who are trying to launch their own businesses, and I meet with them anywhere from one to four to six, eight times over the course of however long they need me. They don't pay for my services. Anybody else who comes to meet me would probably pay about $150 bucks an hour. So I'm very kind to those who want to start a business. We've hosted probably in excess of 12 workshops in the first six months and well over 20 networking events. We're working with a new referral agency. We're working with the Department of Rehab. They're sending us some of their clients who are trying to use the avenue of entrepreneurship as their way to self-sufficiency, which to me, entrepreneurship is the only path to self-sufficiency. But that's, I'm a little prejudiced that way. We have a couple of collaborative projects in the works that I'm really excited about, a new comprehensive website. It's called Santa Maria Style Business, and it's a website that will help anybody who wants to start a business in Santa Maria access all the resources that they need. And any website of any merit, it will always be a work in progress. I do have some trifles to share with you, so that you will see what we have to offer. This is only in six months. We've been here three and a half years. Over the three and a half years, we've seen over 3,000 residents of Santa Maria that would not have been served otherwise. We've worked with our business, our collaborative partners, and launched or resurrected over 70 businesses in Santa Maria that would not be here had it not been for us and our partners. We've provided free training, or greatly reduced training, price training, to over 2,000 entrepreneurs in Santa Maria, and provided free technical assistance training to more than 1,000 microentrepreneurs.
Thank you, Ms. Kremorosa.
Thank you. It's time, it's time to work with us, not against us. Thank you very much.
Tony Coles, followed by Paul Greco.
I don't have to tell you how important economic development is and how it matters. Its ability to change a community at every level. But I'm here to challenge the City Council today, to look past the one-time job creation projects and retail projects, and to expand our goals and vision to economic development, support initiatives that challenge the ideas and our community outlook. As a city, we've always said we wanted to support entrepreneurs, and to do that, you have to support coworking spaces. To understand where our economy is headed, you need to get to know these free agents, the self-employed Jedi Knights, what they do, where they work, and why they've made those choices. Some great examples: Uber, Lyft, Freelancer, TaskRabbit, Airbnb, all great examples of not just coworking, but the new self-employed community and model that people are embracing. There was a recent article by a group called Common Desk, and really what they said was, I'll quote it, "If a neighborhood has a coworking space within it, or in close proximity, they have basically hit the monetary jackpot." And it went on to say that coworking space members not only are job creators, but revenue contributors significantly to their local businesses, as now they're outside of their home, spending money on lunch and other items. Since I've lost, left my cozy little home office, I have grown my business significantly. I've run and lost a bid for City Council, launched a hot sauce company, consulted on several other projects, partnered with other members in that coworking space to purchase a failing franchise, and now we own four Papa John's. One of them employs about 18 people in Santa Maria. Next month, those same partners and I are going to launch a mobile car wash business to service Vandenberg Air Force Base. But the most important thing is the people that I got to know, work with, and really collaborate with on a regular basis. So, again, I'm going to challenge the staff and City Council to embrace a new focus, to create and support initiatives and businesses that are focused on creating a community where entrepreneurs can be, where they can work, and most importantly, collaborate. Thank you.
Did I pronounce your name right? Is it Greco?
You did it the second time. Thank you.
Okay. Paul Greco.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Paul Greco. I'm the sole owner of a law firm in town called Paul Greco Law. Basically, I'm just here tonight to put a face on M-I-Y-B and what some of the previous speakers were talking about. In February 2016, I had a decision to make, where to start my business, where to open a law firm. And I was working out of my home, and it was not sufficient. And so I just started looking in the greater area, whether San Luis Obispo, Bulton, Santa Barbara, or city of Santa Maria. And then I came across, as a suggestion of my sister, you know, because she always thinks she's right, and she said, "Why don't you check into a coworking location?" And I wasn't even aware at the time that there was one. And sure enough, I found M-I-Y-B in the Santa Maria Solution. And what it offered me was a, a place for me to start a business with coaching, with those that could help me with technical support, with, with marketing questions. And I began and opened up my law firm. I started with zero clients, a hope, a wish, and a dream. And to this day, I'm still going, thanks to the Santa Maria Business Development Center, M-I-Y-B. And I encourage the city to continue to support them, relates to, you know, providing a proper business environment. And really, I can say, stand before you today and say, my contributions in representing the citizens of Santa Maria, representing local businesses of this community, is a direct result of having the opportunity in place for me to start a business. So I appreciate the City Council supporting the local business, and I encourage you to continue to do that into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Before we move on, that concludes the public comment. Before we move, Mr. Hayden, do you wish to make any comments? Are we going to have a report on the Enos Ranch right now?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I've asked our Community Development Director, Mr. Chang Ying, to give an overview as to the status of Enos Ranch project and the development that we're doing. I know the council gets a lot of questions with regards to how that progress on that, that project is coming along. So, Mr. Ying.
And, Mr. Hayden, I had asked Mr. Ying to provide us with just a very brief update on where we're at on the downtown specific plan. I was going to wait till council reports at the end, but maybe this would be a good time to-
Perfect time. Yes.
-kill both birds.
Thank you. Mr. Ying?
Mayor Patino, members of the council, this is a brief update on the construction that's occurring at Enos Ranch. So I prepared some slides. Again, this is the location of the project on the east side of, west side of 101, north of Bedaravia. This is the site plan that was submitted for the Costco, and this is what you see today on the ground. This is a picture taken from Bradley, and this is a picture of the fuel pumps. So for Costco, they are on schedule to turn over by September 2nd. That's about a month away. And the exterior is about 70% complete, and the interior is about 50% complete. The parking lot is based out, meaning it's ready for paving, and they're looking to install shelves within a couple of weeks. The fuel station, as you see here, is setting dispensers and power and control wiring. Moving south, this is the site plan for Lowe's and a couple of pads out front, including Coast Hills. So this is just taken today off of Bradley. And Lowe's is on schedule to turn over by August 29th.
Is there a competition going on?
Pretty close, but, I mean, we're talking both of these stores turning over in about a month's time. So this is really exciting. The building is about 85% complete. The colors on the exterior are substantially complete. As you can see, the sign is up. The parking lot will be 100% paved by the end of the week. And I don't have a picture of Coast Hills, but for Coast Hills, the grading for the building pad has commenced. They did encounter an oil sump, so they will do, they'll have to do some testing on that Moving across the street, this is the site plan for Bradley West. This is the building for Buffalo Wild Wings, which is 90% completed with remaining site And in the distance, you see the building for Pad 3, which is Urban Cafe and Xfinity. It's drywalled, it's mostly stuccoed, and it needs a color coat. And as you can see, you can see some of the parking lot curbing, and it's, you know, it'll be ready for, for paving soon. This is just immediately to the north, the, this is the, these are the majors in the shops, and the foundations are poured, except for the shops in the center. The block exterior is going up, and reliable sources say that it's 97% leased. So many of the agreements are in place. Again, this is, will be the location for Dick's, Home Goods, Alta, Kirkland's, Old Navy. Those are just a few of the tenants that will be at this location. So I invite any questions that you may have.
One- Ms. Waterfield?
I just heard today that Black Bear Restaurant will be opening up on Monday, and they're located at the corner of Bedaravia and Miller. And so they're in training right now.
Yeah. I do not have confirmation for that date. I do know that they are moving along quickly.
Okay.
And, but yes, Black Bear, located on Miller and Bedaravia, that's, that's a restaurant that should be open fairly soon.
Fantastic.
And who did you say was in with Urban Cafe?
Xfinity.
Xfinity. So they're going to move from where they're at, down off of McCoy?
I don't know if they will have two offices, or if they will be relocating the office.
Xfinity with Urban Cafe. And what about the restaurants? When do we look at those being opened? Do we know?
Buffalo Wild Wings is first. Urban Cafe is soon after. There are two more pads for Bradley West, which includes the Chick-fil-A, and the other one's the Jack in the Box. On the other side of Bradley, we have The Habit and what should be a Cracker Barrel. No timelines for those just yet, but the, the grading and the undergrounding of utilities is being prepped, it's, they're being prepped for, for construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we know what kind of delay it's going to be for Coast Hills in regards to the oil sump?
It depends on the, what they, the results of the test for the dirt, you know, if-
Yeah.
If it's determined to be hazardous-
The soil's testing.
-then it may result in a delay, but if it's not, then it's a matter of just removing that dirt.
Thank you, Mr. Ying.
Sure. And I'll follow up with a quick update on the downtown specific plan.
Please. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, Dr. Moats.
Dr. Moats had a question.
Quick question, Mr. Ying. Do you have any knowledge of any new automobile dealerships that might be coming into Santa Maria?
Short answer is no, but I did speak with Mr. Cusack and Mr. Bouquet a couple of weeks ago. They do have intentions to submit for a plan development permit in the next couple of weeks. And that will, you know, from what we know, this is for the relocation of Toyota and Honda and, and the domestic brands as well. But they're working on, they're working on new dealerships. As for the downtown specific plan, as you know, it went into effect the first of 2016. And there's a checklist of implementation items on page 100 of the plan, but I would say overall, we are on target to meet most of those tasks. For example, just going through this list here, provide pedestrian and bicycle police and city ranger patrols in downtown. We're doing that. Make improvements to the infrastructure for Town Center West parking lot in preparation for community events. We're doing that, you know, for Downtown Fridays. Apply for a Caltrans grant for a streetscape plan. We have done that. In fact, that is a part of your agenda. There's a recommendation for the selection of a consultant to work with the city on the streetscape plan. Implement a weekly community event. Again, that's Downtown Fridays. And so we're, we've, we're doing a lot of work to bring people to downtown. That's happening. And the next step is really, you know, making those physical changes, or planning for those physical changes that would invite new businesses to come. So you may be aware that we have a proposal in, in the Planning Division for a mixed-use building on the northwest corner of Main and Broadway. So the, I would say that the adoption of the plan has stimulated interest in development within the area, and, and there are plans that we are reviewing that will go before the Planning Commission in a month, in a month or two. So we're hoping that that's just the first, and that additional interest and additional proposals will be brought before the city for development within the downtown. We want downtown to be a place where people can go to dinner on a Friday night, spend money, and bring life, economic activity back to the center of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Ying. Any questions, Mr. Ying? Okay. If none, we'll go on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by rule-call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Madam Mayor-
Yes.
...out of an abundance of caution, two of the items on here reflect a, are related to an organization which I'm affiliated, Good Samaritan Shelter, and I will recuse myself and for the entire consent calendar. I'll go ahead and leave the dais.
Okay. Is that 3H and 3J?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Boyson. Ms. Waterfield?
I need to recuse myself from item number E. I am just going to abstain from that item.
Okay. Thank you. So before moving on and taking action on the consent calendar, I'd like to publicly announce a summary of council action on salaries, salary schedules, or fringe benefits for any executive managers as required by Government Code Section 54953. Accordingly, before the City Council this evening, Agenda Item 3C is a recommendation to approve a salary schematic, which includes the reclassification of the deputy city manager to assistant city manager, which equates to a 5.86% salary increase. So-
With that, Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar excluding item number E.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, exempting E. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Having heard motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Waterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Moats?
Yes.
Councilmember Cordero?
Yes.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead. And this is the one where I'll, will move to accept the consent calendar, except, or including the ones Mr. Boyson's involved in, which are the-
I think we just need to do E. Just E.
Just B.
E.
E. Okay. So, E. Well, then, I move that we accept the consent calendar, item number E.
Second.
So moved in second to accept item number E. Item number, any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Moats?
Yes.
Councilmember Cordero?
Yes.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Yes.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Yes.
Okay. The next order of business is a presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please, please read the title?
The City Council will receive a presentation by Chuck Flax, Executive Director, with the Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness, C-3-H.
Okay. Mr. Flax, welcome again.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the Santa Maria community, staff. Thank you so much. I have to say that in the two years that I've been working with C-3-H, we have incredibly improved the relationship between C-3-H and your city, and that's largely due to the support that we've received from the city manager, the city attorney, and, and just having that level of trust and support has really enabled us to do some exciting things. I've turned in a letter to you that really gives a long list of things that we've done over the last six months. So I'm not going to read that letter. Instead, I'm going to do a quicker PowerPoint presentation. With me today is Andrea Cabanas, who's our team leader for the Santa Maria 10 Now Program, and she's going to talk about that after I'm done. I also have with us Kathy Ortiz. Kathy wears three hats. She is an AmeriCorps member and started with us back in September, I believe. Since then, she's now gotten a part-time position with Transitions Mental Health, and she's also working for the library, doing outreach work at the library with, with homeless members of our community. So, and she's eager to see what's going on with our work here, and thank you, Kathy. So some important statistics. Santa Maria has seen an increase in homeless people. Some of that is because we've gotten better at counting them. And it's, it's important to note that as we develop outreach expertise in the community, we're going to get more trust from people in the community who may have been resisting other kinds of services. And so 338 were counted back in January, 85 of those were unsheltered. That's good news. That means the bulk, the bulk of homeless people that Santa Maria is seeing are being served primarily by Good Samaritan Shelter, who are an essential partner to the, to the work we're doing. They have the highest number of people that are, that they help to house every year in the county, and are really just a phenomenal partner with us. We've been working since January on doing some more direct housing, and we talked about this at my last presentation. We helped to house, and Kathy has been very instrumental in this, we've helped to house two people just since July. She also helped five people get rooms independently, so that's using no public subsidies. They just have other income that they're getting, and they've been able to, to find rooms in, within the, the regular rental market. Something else we've done is developed a, a new model of care using an existing institution. The Salvation Army does a lunch every day, and they don't discriminate as to who comes. Anybody can come and have lunch at the Salvation Army. What we've done is offered a range of other supportive services at that center. It's called Care and Referral. And Jeff Schaefer, who couldn't be with us tonight, is really the architect of this model of service. It's not just giving people a handout. The idea is we're really helping people discover services that they may not know about, that can get them housed and get them, you know, the supportive services they need to stay housed. Since January, we've, we've assessed 70 of those people, meaning we've done a survey called the VI SPID Act that determines their level of vulnerability. And this is really the first step to getting people housed. And as you can see, there's a long list of partners that we're bringing to bear, not just at Care and Referral, but meeting on a regular basis to look at this problem holistically. And Andrea's going to get up in a little while and tell you how some of that is impacting directly the budget that you oversee at the, from, from the Police Department. So I'd like to say this at almost every public hearing. We know how to end homelessness. It is not an intractable problem with no solutions. And these are the four components to ending homelessness in your community. First is knowing everyone by name. And this is critical because, as, as many of you know, homeless people- And this is critical because, as, as many of you know, homeless people don't come in one flavor, and it's not just poverty, and it's not just alcohol or drug problems, and it's not just domestic violence. In some cases, it's all of the above. In some cases, it's, it's really, it's, each case is, is very specific and very complicated. And so the more that we can get to know people's individual needs and wants, the, the better we're going to be able to help them. Our strategy for doing that is through the Care and Referral Centers, which I mentioned, and then also the library, where we've developed this contractual relationship. But in truth, Kathy's been, you know, getting to know people there for quite a while. The library set aside some space for counseling support for any agency that wants to work with, with poor folks or homeless people in, in the community, and, and so they've been a really excellent partner. Second is knowing what people want to need. And so the 70, when I mentioned before about the, the VI SPIDAT surveys that we completed, this is really a new level of awareness that has never been done before in the community, where we're going to be able to track people over time using the Vertical Change System. And I talked about this actually last year when we were applying for funding. We've now been able to implement that, and we now have 70 new people, these are people above and beyond the people going through the Good Samaritan Shelter system, who for one reason or another haven't been able to connect with it. So that's getting to know even more folks in the community and identifying the, the best ways to help them. Third is lining up and expanding resources. And this is critical as, you know, as Kathy could tell you about the five people she helped get housing, many cases, the, the income support that they get from veterans' benefits, or they get from being on disability, or they get from social services, they may not have been able to have because they didn't have an address, they didn't, you know, they weren't, had to know the wherewithal to do the right paperwork, or maybe they found a job as a result of, of working with some of our folks. That helps them get into housing. It also helps us determine, once they're housed, how we can support them. So if they have an alcohol and drug problem, if they have a severe mental health issue, we can bring to bear the county resources that exist to support them. So that's where the coming, lining up the resources is important. And as you'll hear, we received a grant, I guess we got notification of it in February, of $76,000 from Dignity. That's the hospital system that is, that includes Marion Regional Medical Center, to do this kind of outreach assessment and support, particularly of their high utilizing clients, patients, who tend to circle through their emergency rooms and cost the hospital and ultimately taxpayers significant dollars. You know, we've heard cases as much as $200,000 or $300,000 in a year for some of these cases. The research shows, and we're hoping to prove, that if you can get folks housed, if you can get them connected with primary care providers and not using the emergency facilities, that they will stay housed and they're going to save a lot of money for the community. And my hope is that this time next year, I can come back and report to you about the 10 people that we've housed and that, and the work that Dreah's done. And finally, we need to get people into permanent supportive housing. And that's where Dreah comes in. Dreah comes from, she was actually working at Good Samaritan housing veterans, she has a really amazing track record, and she'll come up in a minute and tell you about the work that she's doing with this 10 Now project.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, city staff, and community. My name is Andrea Cabanas. I'm with C3H, and I'm the 10 Now Santa Maria Team Leader. 10 Now, we received 10 Section 8 TBRAs vouchers for people that are, are 10 Now clients, meaning that they are chronically homeless. According to the VI SPIDAT, they have an unusually high score, and they are also high utilizers of the jail and the hospital. Now that we have these vouchers and we have the application submitted, we need to really work on property owner relationships. It's a challenge here in Santa Maria as far as Section 8 goes and, and the way people perceive it. And along with that, we need to really get the obligation of the wraparound services, like the mental health, like public health, IHSS, all of these things, so that we see people that don't end up back in the hospital or back in the system, you know, just being on the streets and going back to jail. So with that being said, I do have some successes with this, and though we haven't housed anybody at this moment, being able to recognize their name and knowing what they want and what they need and, and things like this. In March, I was referred to a gentleman who went to the hospital an awful lot. Approximately three weeks later, he was near death. And by the grace of God, he, he, he got out of it, and we were able to, with mental health and behavioral wellness, get him the medications that he needed and that are, that are helping with his issue. He's a permanent fixture in Santa Maria, and unfortunately. And with these medical issues and mental health issues, with the support of the hospital, we were able to get his relationship back with his family. And though we haven't housed him in his own housing, we were able with, with everything that we did, building a relationship with him, we were able to get him back with his family so that they could help support us in the interim. Since March, he has not been back to the hospital, which is a great success. He's able to communicate, he is compliant with medications and compliant with appointments, and he's quick to call me and remind me of his appointments. It's, it's a process. And I want to say that just in, in knowing all of these people that we deal with in Santa Maria, it's, it's not a cut and dry case. But I've been kind of working with the city on getting numbers, and I was going to jump into that. We're looking at citations. We do a sort of citation clinic at the Care and Referral Centers. And that's just looking at, at all of these citations that people are getting for illegal camping, for example. And we were interested to know how much it actually costs the city to, from point A to the finish, to get numbers on how much it actually costs. So with these preliminary numbers, and this doesn't include sending people to the jail or getting them medically cleared for, for, for the jail system, approximately $211,700 is spent on just, and that was for 365 citations in the last six months. That's quite a bit. And I'm, I'm curious to know if we can kind of reroute this, this funding and this money that we're not using towards something that could help the community. I get a lot of pushback from just citizens, and they, they have their stigmas about homelessness. And, you know, we're, we're trying to educate and let them know that we're, we're out there and we're trying to get, get these people off the streets and whatever it takes. So, that's it. Thank you.
One last thing I wanted to mention, and, and I'm not sure if I conveyed this at the last hearing, I may have, but we were, Santa Maria did something really special at the last point in time count. We had police officers take teams of volunteers out later in the evening, and the police know where folks are. And they were able to quickly, we were able to quickly count, I think, another 50 folks just as a result of the police effort in, in finding people. And in every case that I wrote on, the police officer asked the person, "Do you need help? Is there something we can do for you?" And I, I just want to underline that, that I don't think many police officers go into the business to help homeless people. But Santa Maria has some amazing police officers who, who care deeply about this and want to see change and want to see people off the streets. And they've just been amazingly cooperative with us in, in making this happen. So I just wanted to underscore that and thank them for, for their service. So I'll take any other questions that you have about us. We're very excited, as I said, about our partnership with Santa Maria. I've reapplied for the Dignity Health Grant in the hopes that we can do 10 this year and 10 next year, and we'll, we'll keep this going.
Any questions for Mr. Flax?
Yes.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Mayor. The young lady spoke that there was, seemed to be a problem in, in fulfilling the needs of the Section 8. I assume that problem is with some of the property owners or something. Can you elaborate on what the problem is and what we're doing to mitigate those problems?
Yeah, so there, there's a stigma about Section 8, and that, and to some extent, it may be warranted. I mean, you don't, you, if, as a landlord, if you have a, a property that you're advertising and you can rent to anybody, why would you rent to someone who's going to cause problems? The way that we are hoping to mitigate it in Santa Maria and, and across the county is by providing support to the residents. So the landlord isn't going it alone. They're not just taking a Section 8 voucher and renting to just anybody off the street. They're, they're meeting with a team of support that includes the county staff, it includes Telecare, which is a county contractor, it includes Transitions Mental Health, it includes C3H staff, who, if there's a need, if there's any problem, the landlord would know who to call. And that it would be another level of support. In cases where that's been offered, there's been a lot of success. There's a program actually that, that's here locally called the Landlord Liaison Program that's had a lot of success, housing low-income and formerly homeless people by offering those kinds of assurances. So we're, we're hoping to replicate that specifically with the 10 Now clients.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyson?
And that kind of led into my question. I noticed that you hadn't mentioned until now the Landlord Liaison Project. How closely are you working with those folks? Is that a...
We're getting closer every day. I mean, one of the, one of the interesting things that's happened really just in the last year is the United Way locally has taken a much more aggressive role in, in targeting homelessness as its primary issue. So it was, for a long time, the United Way was primarily focused on economic development and literacy, and they still are. But they've, Eddie Taylor has taken on a much larger role at developing a range of programs to support efforts to end homelessness and reduce its impacts. So right now, they oversee our work, where they're our fiscal agent. They hold the contract for AmeriCorps countywide, which is roughly 50 or so volunteers working day in and day out, supporting homeless people and doing outreach. And they, they rent to the Landlord Liaison Program. Now, I don't know for sure yet whether that relationship is set in stone going forward, but I understand that there, there, there's going to be an even closer connection with Landlord Liaison. And we're, you know, I'm close to their board, I, it's, we're, we're really trying to, to leverage their support because they've made tremendous contacts with landlords across the county.
But, but it sounds like they're concentrating their efforts in South County more than...
No, no, they have, they have a full-time staff person here in Santa Maria.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Flax.
Thank you, I really appreciate your support.
Thank you, Ms. Cabana. Madam Clerk, let's see, the next order of business is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider a recommendation of the Planning Commission to amend Title 12 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code, adding Chapter 1255 regarding shopping carts. On July 19th, 2017, the Planning Commission voted 5 to 0 to approve a zoning text amendment, Z20170003, to Title 12 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code to add the chapter 1255 related to shopping carts.
Stack reported to be given by, I'm, that's why you're standing here at the podium?
That's correct.
Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Senko.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. It's my pleasure once again to be before you tonight. This is a relatively long PowerPoint, but I will go quickly because it's mostly photos. And my comments that I will make are all incorporated into the slides. So it's called Problems with Shopping Carts because I think we do have a problem in the city with shopping carts. And we've all seen it, shopping carts pushed around by someone usually full of odds and ends, personal belongings. Sometimes they have groceries, and usually they don't. The carts are most often used to store personal belongings of a homeless person usually, and the cart accompanies him or her to locations where they're used for various activities, sleeping, camping, sometimes panhandling. This one's like a trash enclosure where you can see he has his cart and the bicycle, and then he's, he's camped out there. Many times the carts are left abandoned, either voluntarily when they leave town, transient leaves town, or as you heard, they're arrested for various violations camping, and carts are just left where they were left. And they need to be dealt with. And sometimes they're hidden so that, you know, they can get, a homeless person can come back to them, but then they become a problem for local businesses a lot of the time. And, and sometimes code enforcement has to get involved in, in addressing these situations. And, you know, you, sometimes they're just left unattended temporarily, the homeless person has every intention of returning to pick it back up, but a police officer or city ranger will come across it, and it becomes found property at that point. And if it's unintended on private property, the property owner might go ahead and remove it, push it onto public property, which they're not supposed to do, but sometimes they do. If they don't, then code compliance can respond to a complaint. If it's on public property, city ranger, city Santa Maria police officer will impound it as found property, and it has to be stored for a minimum 90-day period under state law and our local ordinance. We store these at the landfill right now, and they can be claimed. We, we don't always know who has the property, but if someone were to inquire about it, we would let them know. All right, so how did we get here? Business and professions code is part of the California Shopping and Laundry Cart Law. It does make it a misdemeanor to remove from business premises a shopping cart with the intent to permanently deprive the owner. Can only be cited as an offense, though, if the cart is marked with a sign identifying the owner and the, and the retailer, and also includes this information. Notifies the public of the procedure to be utilized for the authorized removal, notifies the public that the authorized removal, unauthorized removal is a violation, and lists a valid phone number and address. Citation may only be prosecuted by the county district attorney, where the city attorney's office is not able to prosecute. And this is not a high priority for the district attorney. Also, and this is a loophole in the law, many of our homeless people have discovered that they cannot be cited at all if the signage was removed. If it's removed, they are found, if the officer questions, "Where did you get the cart?", they say, "I found it this way and had no intent to deprive the owner." So even if these cases were to be prosecuted, they wouldn't be convicted. The city is only authorized, under three circumstances, to impound shopping carts under state law. One is if it's a threat to provision of emergency services, such as if it's abandoned in the middle of the street, city can impound it and impose an impound fee on the cart owner in that case. Can, it can immediately impound them, but after it impounds it, the city has to give actual notice to the cart owner and give the cart owner three days to retrieve the cart. And if the owner does so, the city may not impose an impound fee. Or we can give three days written, oh, excuse me, I should say actual notice to the shopping cart owner of the location of one of its cart and give the owner, you know, three days to retrieve it. If not, the city can impound it and then in charge an impound fee. And then the carts that the city does impound have to be stored in an area reasonably convenient to the owner and open six hours of business day. And if somebody doesn't, if somebody keeps, if the owner keeps leaving their carts out or getting, they're getting off of the property and they're not retrieving them, after three such violations in the, in six months, a $50 fine can be imposed. It doesn't really serve as a financial deterrent. So basically, state law doesn't really work for the city. Impounding carts, we become a storage facility for these. This is where they're temporarily stored at the back parking lot of the old police station before they're taken to the landfill. Shopping carts have an impact on the city, they cause blight, they proliferate, they're often associated with junk trash and debris. Law enforcement, police, city rangers spend a significant amount of staff time loading and hauling the shopping carts to the landfill and responding, otherwise responding to issues like homeless camps and things like that. This is what the law says, we have to hold it for 90 days, so it requires the police to transport it to the landfill for holding. That impacts solid waste as well. Santa Maria spends, Santa Maria PD spends about 15 hours per week handling shopping carts. The city rangers report they spend about 10 hours a week, and code enforcement, working with the private property owners, about three hours per week. This totals at least $71,500 in personnel costs that are directly related to having to deal with the shopping carts that are not contained on business premises. In addition, conservative estimate of the, of the value of the lost revenue... In addition, conservative estimate of the value of the lost revenue that, homeless property that's taken to the sanitary landfill and deposited, excuse me, and eventually disposed of it, it can cost up to about $25,000 a year in lost revenue. A very depressing thing is that, and I wish I had one of the police officers here to explain what this is about. The carts are used for storing all kinds of things. The worst case is that we've seen, of course, is the storage of human waste in buckets. Apparently, it's, you know, at these camps, they don't want to, you know, pollute their area, so it's, you know, attempting to keep it somewhat sanitary, put it in buckets, but then it's stored in the carts. They can either be moved and dumped elsewhere or just left there and it happens. So the problem is, when these carts are put back into service, there's no guarantee they're properly sanitized before being placed back in service. And, you know, the disinfecting hand wipes across the push bar doesn't really remove potential toxins as discussed in this scholarly paper about bacterial contamination of shopping carts.
Excuse me, Mr. Senko?
Yes.
Does the state require the owners, when they pick up the carts, to sanitize them?
I'm unaware of any law that requires that. But this study has shown, for example, this one found E. coli in shopping carts. Presumably, that's due to meat when it's placed on the cart, not one of the plastic bags. And so that would make sense, that's probably where it came from. But the point is, bacteria can contaminate carts, so it's a public health threat if they're not properly sanitized. The best solution is to keep them from getting off the premises in the first place. And we believe that some solutions can be inexpensive. You saw the letter from the California Grocers Association, they were assuming that we were going to be requiring expensive technology and impose that. That's not at all what the ordinance is going to do, as I'm going to explain in a little bit. Some solutions could be just as simple as having someone more frequently clear the parking lot of the carts, or cable them at night so they can't be removed. Sometimes just interior storage may solve the problem. I've seen those poles that prevent them from being taken out of the store. Employees can be trained to frequently collect them when they do, are taken out of the store and bring them back inside. Now, there is an expensive solution, the wheel lock technology, which is, I think, what people are moving towards in a long way, or in a big way. It locks the wheels of the cart when it reaches an electronic barrier. I got this number, 12,000 to 16,000, from the Viarta. They mentioned a company, I won't mention it here because I don't want to, you look like I'm plugging it, but they used it frequently and they say it's about 12,000 to 16,000 for a three-acre property. If their shopping cart costs between $200 and $600, I've heard all kinds of estimates, that system could pay for itself within two months if one cart per week is lost on the average, which I think is about right, maybe a little less, but still, it's not as expensive as that letter said, that it was upwards of $50,000. This is a more European solution, there's like a coin-operated release. One system I read about has, uses the cart corrals in the parking lots to get your coin or your token back. And that has the added benefit of keeping the shopping carts in the corrals rather than, you know, strolling about the parking lot. Gives people an incentive to put them in those corrals. Another solution, of course, is a cart retrieval service. That is a great one. A lot of the ordinances that cities have adopted, for instance, Lompoc, and then the Visalia ordinance that the Chamber, Glenn Morris of the Chamber brought to your attention, they exempt businesses from having, from having to submit a cart containment plan if they have a cart retrieval service. Problem right now, according to the businesses that we've talked to, there isn't a cart retrieval service in town. So maybe if the ordinance is passed, there'll be an incentive for an entrepreneur to start a company, to do some cart retrieval, and maybe that would be an inexpensive solution for the grocery stores if they all work together and contracted with a cart retrieval service. One side effect, as we know, sometimes the carts are taken from business premises, not by homeless persons, but by someone who needs the cart to take their groceries home because they don't have a car, or too much to carry on the bus, or whatever. One solution that came up in Leadership Academy, thank you, Mr. Hayden, for having us do those assignments and come up with projects. These foldable carts can be put underneath a cart at the grocery store, so someone could wheel that to the store and then put their groceries in that and wheel it back. They're not too expensive, but for somebody who's really needy, maybe there's grants or nonprofit organizations that can provide these carts for free or a substantial rebate. Just, there are ways to help solve that problem. So now I'll discuss the outline of the proposed ordinance. This is the main event here. The ordinance requires owners to effectively contain or control carts within the boundaries of their store premises. That's the key. Effectively contained means no more than three removed within a 24-hour period. So that does require some work on the part of staff to determine if there's been a violation. But if we never find three carts off the business premises during a 24-hour period, the ordinance will not have any impact on the business, impact on the business, because the business is able to effectively contain and control its shopping carts, and it won't be in violation. But what happens if we do find three carts off-site during a 24-hour period? That means that a notice of violation will be issued to the business. The business will be required to apply for administrative conditional use permit with the Department of Community Development within 30 days, and it'll have to include a cart containment plan. It will describe one or more shopping cart containment methods that will be implemented and will result in achieving the cart loss threshold, less than two shopping carts removed during a 24-hour period. And the ordinance does not require any particular cart containment method. It's up to the business to come up with what solution works best for it. However, the Director of Community Development is required to issue the permit only after he's satisfied that the plan will work. And the ordinance also requires some signage, not important. And there's some penalties. The fines can be up to $1,000. Need a little teeth to encourage people to comply with the ordinance if they're not complying, if they're not in compliance. So basically, to end it, the shopping cart abandonment is a serious issue. The failure to keep the carts contained on business premises results in an externalization of private costs onto the public. And I want to comment on what Mr. Morris said, that the city needs to work both sides of the problem. And I think you heard CH3, the council is funded that and is supporting that effort. And I know that my colleague, Kristi Malinkoff, is working very closely with code enforcement and the CSU and CH3 to work that other side of the problem. So we are handling both sides, but I do think, as Mr. Morris called it, the supply side needs to be addressed as part of the solution. And I do want to also add that the, we don't see this as a business unfriendly ordinance. You know code enforcement and how we work with people. We will work with the businesses to come up with a way, to find some solutions, and if they need help from law enforcement to implement some of those solutions, you can be assured that we will work with them. However, until we get, I believe until we get this ordinance passed, we're not going to solve the problem of the shopping carts. So I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Any questions of Mr. Senko? Mr. Boyson?
Mr. Senko, do we, I didn't see any mention in here. Do we know who the worst offenders are?
Uh, we do.
And are they, is it just based on volume and size, or is...
I think it's, it's a little bit of both. There's, they're large operations, but also sort of not responsive to our concerns. I don't really want to call anyone out.
No, and I don't either, but I mean, is there a way to, it seems to me that there are, I know that, for instance, the Walmart Center down on Blosser, I think Walmart has the electronic strips or whatever, so that, but I understand that they still get them taken, that people drag these things with their wheels locked for blocks. So, you know, I...
Like I said, we would be reasonable, I mean, if a store has taken some effort and, you know, and again, we have to, we have to actually go out and find the carts off-site during a 24-hour period. It's not something that we're going to do on a regular basis. It would have to be a serious problem to even catch it, and then we'd want some cooperation from somebody before we would work the citation side or the penalty side. And we're open to a lot of ideas. As a matter of fact, the meeting that we had, I should have mentioned, it's in the staff report, but we did have a community outreach meeting, and although the turnout was very poor, we did have some really good discussion about how we could work towards some ideas to help each other, the business community and the law enforcement personnel. Because they're frustrated by this problem. They understand that this is a violation, we fully acknowledge this is a crime against the, the illegal theft of their property is a terrible thing, and we have a lot of sympathy. So, but we feel that they have to take more efforts to contain them. We don't have the ability to do anything else. The shopping cart law prohibits us from doing any other law than what is required. If we could just impound the carts and make some money, maybe we would do that. We willingly serve as a cart retrieval service. And I understand, Mr. Pisada told me that we used to do that, but we lost money, so much money doing it, that we just couldn't afford to do it anymore. So we have to come up with some other solution, and the cart law allows the city to pass an ordinance about containment, so that's what we've done. We feel this is the best solution.
I guess I just want to make sure that whatever ordinance we pass, and believe, I know that we're in some uncharted water on a lot of this stuff, but I just want to make sure that whatever ordinance we pass is directed towards those most egregious offenders, and that we're not punishing those individuals that are, for lack of a better term, just innocent bystanders, that they just happen to be in the wrong area of town and they, you know, get hit more often.
I couldn't agree more, Councilmember Boyson. I've been involved in code enforcement, either directly or indirectly, for my whole career, 17 years here. Going after non-egregious offenders is never a good strategy. It's always best to go after the worst offenders for many reasons. Thank you.
Ms. Waterfield? Mr. Senko, with a follow-up question to Councilmember Boyton. Out of the 48 local businesses that you notified, and only five businesses showed up, was the most egregious offender one of the five?
One of the egregious offenders was there.
And did they have any solutions in regards to...
They did show some cooperation and willingness to work with law enforcement. Like I said, it was a very positive exchange. So we were pleased that they attended and that they were able to have this exchange with the community services unit.
And so they were in agreement that they would cooperate?
They would, we were in agreement that they would try to work together, come up with the solution. I mean, they knew this ordinance was coming, and frankly, they didn't really have a lot of objections to the ordinance. There was only four businesses, actually. One of them was just the business owner who was in the shopping center that was complaining about homeless people camping out in front of the store. So he was kind of a, not there for the shopping cart ordinance. But it illustrated the problem that there's a, the store was allowing homeless people to, like, basically camp out at the store and use it the back, and they weren't taking efforts to interfere with that or discourage that, which was frustrating the community services unit. So they, like I said, they had a frank discussion and agreed to work together.
Yeah, unfortunately, when we, when we do create something like this, and it's due to the most egregious offenders, the little guy may get caught up, but maybe the little guy will be forthcoming in implementing their, our, the city's procedures into not to violate.
Yeah, one of the beauties of the ordinance, I think, is because it doesn't require anybody to submit a cart containment plan, it gives, and we don't have to start the survey going out right away. We can delay the process, work on education, let them know that this ordinance is passed, and work with them towards solutions. And I, that is the approach I intend to encourage. We don't have to go out, you know, out the gates running. We can gradually implement this over time. And stores can take action on their own. Once they know the ordinance is passed, they can figure it out, and maybe we never, they never come on our radar, they solved the problem, but now they have the incentive to do so because they're looking at possible fines or other consequences that they don't want to have to deal with. And so maybe that gives them the ability to work with their corporate management. Because one of the things we discovered is, some of the district managers were really supportive of this. They said, "I've been trying to talk to my corporate people, but they don't want to do it because it costs money."
Yeah.
So now that this may cause them to have the right financial incentives.
Well, absolutely. And then reading in the report, there's also, after the first violation of the three or more carts, then they have to administer a CUP to provide a cart containment plan?
Yes.
And so how much is that CUP going to be?
You know, I would have to defer to Chun. It's an administrative CUP. I don't think it's very much.
Yeah, I don't have the exact amount, but it's minimal.
But it will cause more attention to those who just offend this...
Yeah, and again, my goal is to avoid anyone having to do that.
Absolutely, yeah.
We will be working with these businesses by, we'll tell them, "Hey, this is coming. This is the law now. This is what you're facing unless you take action. We'll have another two on the two belt."
Well, it's such a public health concern as well with what we've just learned, and I'm looking at grocery carts a little bit more differently, and...
That's what the members of the Planning Commission said.
Oh, my goodness, oh, my goodness, yes. As a matter of fact, I saw a lady in a grocery store today that had a cloth-lined, she brought in her own things that she could just throw in the laundry and...
Yeah, I've seen those, too.
Yeah, they're, it's amazing, so...
Any other questions, Mr. Senko? Dr. Morris?
Yeah, Mr. Senko, so this isn't a plan that you've created. You patterned it after a program, I understand, that was implemented by the city of Glendale?
Correct.
How's it working for Glendale?
95% containment of carts after the first year of the ordinance.
Second question, in all new retail developments, is it true that they have to have one of these programs in place for new development?
That is, again, another question for the Community Development Director, but it's my understanding that there, the city is planning on conditioning all new businesses that create, that are, excuse me, all new businesses that require discretionary approval, that would be a condition of approval. Sometimes if one grocery store goes out of business, another one takes over and it's zoned properly, then it's not discretionary approval. For example, the Viarta on South Broadway took over the Vaughn's store. They did not have to put any guards up, but the city asked them to, and they did. They put up some guards voluntarily as part of the process, but we couldn't have forced them to do it, but they were cooperative.
They used guards, or did they use the magnetic locks?
I was told it was guards from, and I thought it was magnetic locks, but it might just be guards. Something that discourages it, that, I'm not sure, maybe, yeah, Chun knows the answer to that.
I was going to, Senko and members of the council, I was going to follow up on the information that was requested in regards to the administrative conditional use permit. The fee is $1,197.
Okay, so a little more than I thought.
And would you like to direct your question to Mr. Ying on the, what, what the...
Oh, the magnetic locks?
The magnetic locks.
Yeah, at the, where Viarta took over from Vaughn's, did they put in magnetic locks or some other mechanism to avoid carts being off premises?
We don't currently condition that requirement. We asked for a cart containment plan, but we leave it up to the, to the business to choose whether they want to do that or not.
And what did Viarta choose to do, do you know?
I don't know. I think they may, you know, find it effective for them.
It must be, yeah. I'm sorry, the reason I was confused is that the planner that provided the information to me called it shopping cart guards. And I'm assuming that's got to be a magnetic thing, because it wouldn't do any good to just have a bump. So I do apologize for not knowing the specific answer to your question. My understanding was, and again, I apologize if there was any confusion, my understanding, based on conversations with the previous Planning Division manager, who's not here anymore, that staff was going to condition all of the new developments for grocery stores to have the magnetic locks, and that one had already been done. But maybe that was incorrect information and I wasn't able to verify it. So I apologize if I've been inaccurate, but I think it would be a good idea to do that as a condition of approval for a new development, and I would certainly recommend that ComDev consider that, at least something to negotiate.
Mr. Senko, I would, I would add that that is something that I would recommend that we begin conditioning. There was some confusion with the term shopping cart guard, that more has to do with just the rails that, you know, contains the shopping carts.
Okay.
What are Costco and Lowe's going to do?
I'll just, can I answer real quick about Costco? One of my, my staff always talks about Costco, how they've never found a Costco cart off-site. And it's surprising because they're, they're nice and heavy and big, but Costco, for some reason, has figured it out. We've never found one off the premises. And my staff always points out that that's an example of somebody who knows how to do that without an electronic barrier system. So I don't know what they're going to do, what they're going to do with them... So I don't know what they're going to do, what they're going to do with the new location, but they've, they're very serious about maintaining their cart control.
We didn't, we didn't ask Costco in our, in our research on your staff report. No?
No.
No, but the condition for, for Costco is just a, that they provide a plan.
Well, and I, I mean, we've all been to Costco. I don't think I've ever been to Costco that I didn't see somebody out there corralling carts in the, in the parking lot, so I'm, yeah, they...
Like I said, one of the things that, one of the solutions could be just having somebody out there all the time, not letting the carts be out there lingering and making sure they're under control like Costco does.
Which is tough for a small, smaller business, obviously.
It certainly is.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Senko, let me see if I have this correct here. We've created this ordinance, which some people might consider the fine or the punitive action here is significant. It gets up to a thousand bucks. That is a, that is a figure that we're hoping deters these people. You don't really want to collect that $1,000. We would like it to, use it to solve the problem. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. The $1,000 is a maximum fine and our officers use their discretion in each case. They very seldom go out and issue the maximum fine first off. Usually it's a small incremental fine and it builds up.
So the issuing person has the authority to graduate that from a lower figure to the $1,000?
Absolutely. And I can speak for code enforcement, that is what their policy is. Sometimes they'll just, the first one will be a freebie and it won't even, there'll just be a warning and then the fines start after that.
Okay.
Like I said, you have to trust the, our well-trained law enforcement and code enforcement staff to administer this with discretion and not start going crazy and issuing signs. Because that is not the intention of the ordinance. It's to try to create incentive for the businesses to, to come up with a cart containment measure that will work for them, but, you know, it's kind of a carrot and stick approach.
It just seems to me that your, your presentation is focused around compliance, not fines.
Correct. We're not trying to raise revenue with this.
Thank you.
We're trying to actually save the loss of city staff time spent chasing these carts around and responding to them.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Senko? Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence?
Yes, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. City staff has received one communication from Mr. Aaron Moreno, Senior Director of Government Relations for the California Grocers Association. Copies were provided to you on the dais this evening. I was asked to read this letter into the record in full. "On behalf of the California Grocers Association here on out, CGA, I write to express some concerns about the proposal to deal with the issue of off-site shopping carts before you and the council today. As it is currently drafted, CGA believes it would inadvertently punish victims of theft, grocery stores who have their carts stolen off of their premises, and lead to higher business costs for our members who survive on the thinnest of profit margins in an industry where 3% is considered good and 1% to 2% is the norm. CGA understands that city staff has made attempts to reach out to the, to businesses that might potentially be affected by the proposed ordinance, such as grocers. On behalf of our member companies that you reached out to, we would first like to apologize for not engaging sooner on this topic. That said, as the trade association that represents grocers before elected officials from cities to counties to state legislators, please know that we are prepared to cooperate with you, councilmembers and city staff to craft a solution to shopping cart theft that meets the needs of the city in such a way that is not overly burdensome to the grocers that serve your community. It is worth noting that the type of containment systems this ordinance foresees can cost nearly $50,000 to install and thousands of dollars per month to maintain for businesses that operate on such a thin profit margin. While we know that the city council is prepared to act today on a, on first reading of this measure, we would simply request that you delay action on this item today, or if that is not possible, delay second reading of this measure until CGA's team can meet with city staff to craft a measure that works for all parties involved. We have worked with numerous local governments across the state to draft cart ordinances to address this issue in a way that mindfully balances the needs of the business and government and are prepared to do so with the city of Santa Maria moving forward. Please feel free to have your staff reach out to me," and he provided his email, "at their earliest convenience to begin this process. Thank you for consideration. Respectfully, Aaron Moreno, Senior Director, Government Relations, California Grocers Association."
Thank you. I'd like to open this up to a public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
No, we have no requests to speak.
Okay. Okay, so I'll close the public hearing, bring the issue back to the council for discussion or a motion.
So, Madam Mayor, if I can ask, Mr. Senko, is there a response to this letter as far as from the CGA? I mean, it sounds reasonable, but obviously they're coming in pretty late here.
Well, yeah, we received, Mr. Hayden told me that he received a call from them and the letter came in today. My intention is to call or email her tomorrow and let her know whatever ideas you decided and tell her more about the ordinance and, and welcome any ideas she may have about working to solve the problem, explaining, that I've already explained to you about our approach, our intended approach.
Yeah, it appears that they're expecting some really big costly ordinance and this isn't the case.
Yeah, and again, that's why I was surprised when they saw that number because I got the $12,000 to $15,000 number from District Manager Viarta, who did install that system. And I did talk to, many of you may know Juan Vargas from Fruitmax. He, he said that they, some other stores that they've done in Modesto and Bakersfield, they spent between $20,000 and $25,000, still much less than the $50,000.
So what is your pleasure? I, I think that if they really wanted to cooperate, they would have sent this in before the 11th hour. You know, and because we did outreach, you did outreach to them and, not just with the letters, but with phone calls and nobody responded, well, I shouldn't say nobody, four people responded.
And I guess my other thought would be that, I mean, this is not set in stone. I mean, if, if we do get a better idea, is forthcoming to replace this, we can always be looking at that, I guess.
Yeah, and I just remembered, I was thinking about it on the way over here. We probably need to amend the ordinance at some point before the parade of lights because technically, if some of the shopping carts are donated for use at the parade of lights to gather the food, that would be a violation. Probably need to have a written authority or written permission. I'm sure we wouldn't prosecute anyone that would do that, but it's still, it might be nice to put that in the ordinance and if we have some better ideas, we can include that.
And then the second thing is, what are we going to do in community development to make sure that these large stores do keep these carts on their premises?
For new projects, we're going to condition, you know, put the condition in place to have the electronic locking, locking mechanism for existing centers or centers that are under construction, such as Costco. We will review their plan and make sure that their plan for containment is adequate.
Is it legal, here's another thing, Mr. Senko, that we can require these of other stores in the future? I mean, other stores that are already built, already operating and say that we plan to include this in four years, five years, or as you replace baskets? Can we require that?
There is, Madam Mayor, members of the council, there, there are provisions in the law where you can do that, you can retro require existing properties or businesses and uses to, you know, move up to current standards. But you have to have a reasonable, what they call amortization period. In other words, if you have to look at the cost of something and then give the business enough time to plan, so the answer is yes. We could do that, but I probably need to think about five to 10-year period to phase that in if we were going to go down that route.
I would be, I would really be in favor of that because, you know, this, this has been an issue I brought forward and it's been, we've been working on it for, I thought it was going to be simple. I didn't realize that the state had any, was meddling in this. So I, you know, I thought it was going to be very, very simple to do. And it's taken us all this time to get this done. And I appreciate the work you've done. This has taken a lot of research, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So I, you know, three, four, or five years isn't that long to wait for them to be in compliance of what we really want done. And maybe they'll do it sooner because as they are replacing carts, they may do it sooner.
One comment, the city of Glendale has saw 95% compliance rate since implementation. Have they seen any, or do you know of any unintended consequences that have come out of this?
No, I haven't. I haven't heard of any. I didn't contact them and ask that question, but I didn't see any in my research that, it was all positive. A number of other cities emulated this in light of their success.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Cordero?
It seems to me, just reading this, this letter that we have for communication, they, they put themselves off as, as an organization that has worked well with municipal governments and helped to write many, according to them here, ordinances all over. Well, isn't part of the ordinance, the writing, the learning we could do from these people if in fact they are that good, is when they write their containment part of it, each one. If they've got a, if they've got a great plan for a containment plan, that maybe everybody will jump on board with it. It's, I mean, it emphasizes the idea that we're not out to make money on this, we're out for compliance. So, so I don't see any point in, in waiting for them. They can still be a significant part of building the process. And as you said, if we have to amend the, the ordinance six months from now or a year from now, we can do that. That's, that's within our purview. Is that right?
Correct, Mayor Patino and members of the city council, Councilman Cordero, I, I actually think that they haven't read the ordinance closely. I think when I call her tomorrow and speak with her and explain exactly the approach, I don't think they're going to have as big of an issue with it as, as that letter indicates. I just think that this is something that came to their attention late. They filed off a letter, or fired off a letter and we didn't have a chance to communicate directly.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Senko.
Thank you.
Dr. Moats?
Following up on what Councilman Cordero said, I think I'd be in favor of passing this this evening.
Is that your motion?
Then I'd make that motion.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. You want to name the ordinance? It's 2017-13. Introduced and continued next meeting for a second reading. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Moats?
Hi.
Councilmember Cordero?
Hi.
Councilmember Boyson?
Hi.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. The next order of business is in, thank you, Mr. Senko, appreciate that. The next order of business is another public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider a recommendation of the Recreation and Parks Commission, who voted three to zero, Commissioner Spie absent and Commissioner Burnett abstained, to amend Title 10 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code, adding Chapter 10-5, establishing a commercial activity and concession permit process for city parks.
Staff report is to be made by the Director of Recreation and Parks, Mr. Passata.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I want to apologize to you first because I was the guy hacking back there in the back of the room. So I, hopefully that won't be a problem while I'm up here today. But if I take a break, you'll know why. I also want to thank you for the shopping cart ordinance. It has been a major project for Recreation and Parks. For over the last 17 years, we've been responsible for collecting carts around the city and this will definitely help us work on that kind of a problem. So thank you very much. Tonight, I'm bringing back to you an item, which is the establishment of an application and permit process for commercial vendors in city parks. We brought this item to you back in June and based on the public comment that received, the council asked that we go back to the commission and look at the fees. That was the major stumbling block that we saw. The fees seemed a little high, even though they were based on a survey we conducted with 16 other cities similar to Santa Maria. So what we're bringing back to you today and has gone to the Recreation and Parks Commission is a revision to that plan. The initial plan in June spoke about individuals who were, would be providing or using our parks to provide education or fitness programs, that they would purchase a permit for $300 a year. We revised that down to a $91 fee. Motorized bicycle vendors, pushcart vendors were proposed in June to be $600. We've revised that fee to be $273 for up to three of those types of units. Many of the companies do have these, several units, not just one, selling snacks or ice cream or whatever it might be. And then $91 for any additional units beyond those three. And then the motorized vendor or the food truck would be $1,200 under the June proposal and dropping it down to $273. What we tried to use to, as a benchmark for fees was, is our commercial structures permit, which we already charge. These are for companies in the city that provide bounce houses, the inflatable types of units that they bring into the park system. They are already required to have a permit. So we went back and we looked at that fee structure and that is how we revised this one to be exactly the same as what we're charging for commercial structures. We feel this is a significant drop, obviously, in the fee. Still, it's something that the council has already adopted in the past, so it's something that the community, commercial community is, is aware of. And it also will help us offset our costs that we've explained in the past associated with these kinds of activities happening in the park. One of the other items that came up during the discussion was, was establishing insurance levels for these kind of vendors. In conversations with the city attorney's office, what we've come up with is that we have yet to establish a liability limit for these companies. What we would like to do is look at the individual applicant and providing some reasonable limits for public liability insurance they would have to present to us when they get their permits. So we're working on that still. The second item that came up was the county health permit requirement, whether or not the city can enforce the, the requirement for public, for a county health permit. And again, in discussions with the city attorney's office, what we found is that if our ordinance in fact requires those individuals to have a public health permit, that our officers, if it's the city police or the city rangers or the code compliance officer, they can request to see that individual's business license and their health permit and their city permit to vend in the park. So all those would fall within the purview of those officers by adopting this ordinance. So we think we've addressed the concerns of the public at the last public hearing you held on the item. We think it's a fair fee structure. And again, it is, it is something that we can always come back and revise if it's not working well for the business community. But we do think it's an important part of helping the park system recover from these kinds of uses. That concludes my staff report. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Passata? Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, Mr. Passata, this is only for city parks, not for the vendors on the streets?
Correct.
Okay.
Hmm. Hmm. Any other questions?
I have the same hmm you have.
Hmm. So I'm leaving the park with my pushcart and I'm in the corner and somebody wants to buy something from me?
Good question. So those, those vendors are already required to have a business license and so if they are on the public right of way, we've seen them all over town, out in front of schools or whatever, waiting for the kids to come out, they would, they could be stopped by an officer and they could be asked for their business license to do business in the city and that is done. We also have made contact with individuals who run the car washing businesses and flower sales and, you know, anything that happens, you know, kind of on the street corner. And we do check for business licenses regularly around the city.
Okay, so let me get this. They have to have insurance, they have to get a health permit, and then we would give them a business permit?
They have to have their, their business license, their health permit, and then they would be able to come into their Recom Parks Office and apply for their vendor permit to sell in the parks.
Okay. When we give them a business permit, don't they have to have the health permit first or business license? or business license?
I'm not 100 percent sure how that works.
Well, it would seem like it would. Why would I give you a license to do business if the health department says...
Perhaps the Director of Finance could answer that question.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Harvey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's my understanding that the health department actually requires them to have a business license before they'll issue a health permit. So, it's kind of a... Yeah. It's whichever you get, so you get into that battle. So, we do not require them to have it before we issue the business license, but they can be requested by code enforcement or the rangers or a police officer to show that.
Is this a policy of the county, or is this state law, or do you know?
I don't know if it's state law, but I believe that that's what the county policy is, that they require that there's a business, that they show the business license before they'll issue the health.
Okay. So, now you've got these pushcarts that sell, you've got corn. So, we give them a business license. Do they go to the county and get a permit, a health permit? They can't get a health permit for that, can they?
I believe they have to.
Well, they have to, but do they?
They're supposed to. So, I guess the health agencies, would they also go out and ask for this?
Or if they have a pushcart, a shopping cart, and they're selling food out of that...
But that's part of our enforcement process. We ask them for a business license and health permit.
I know that, but my question is, why would we give them a business license if it's not a health issue?
Madam Mayor, I...
Go ahead.
Well, I just suppose that why would they give them a health permit if they didn't have a business license? It depends on whether you're sitting in the county office or the city office. Why would I want to give you a health permit if you don't have a business license? And we're asking the same question in the other direction.
Mr. Hayden.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, the business license is a business tax. It's not regulatory. It's revenue-producing. So, we don't administer it from a regulatory standpoint. However, if the council wants us to give direction to, when we engage the vendors to check for a business license and a health permit, we can work in coordination with the county in that regard.
Let me ask this question. So, if a vendor has a business license and no health permit, are we allowed to shut them down, or does the county have to come in and shut them down?
My guess is...
I would defer that answer to the city attorney to you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Our code enforcement officers always check for a business license. If they don't have it, they are cited. They also check for a health permit, and if they don't have it, they are also cited. So, one thing about this ordinance I'd like to point out is the fee is to offset the costs to the parks and the use for the parks. It doesn't address the use of the public sidewalks or other public spaces.
I understand. I just wanted to follow up on the information, yeah.
The other item, Mayor and council members, is that it does affect different kinds of food differently. If they are prepackaged food items, snacks that already are sealed, there's no health permit required, is my understanding. So, if you produce the food, then that's where you end up getting in the trouble. So, that would be your corn vendor selling out of a pot in a trailer or something like that, or a cart.
So, that would include fresh fruit as well? Because I've seen vendors with fresh fruit that are already sliced and ready to go and...
Well, I think it's commercially available food is what it talks about, prepackaged, at least in the sections of the health code that I read.
Right. But for the fresh fruit, they would require a health permit?
Yes, yes.
And health permits are required when the barbecues are done on the corner?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Then do they come and get a permit from you before? Do we get just a one-day permit?
There's, we're really not looking at those kinds of sales that happen, you know, the street barbecues from the Kwanis.
No, I know, but I'm just asking that question while we're dealing with this. That's the only reason I want to...
Yeah, it would not address them.
Okay. Dr. Moats.
I have a question. The vendors that you're mentioning in here that you're going to assess a fee for, are these vendors for-profit?
Typically, yes.
And then what if it's nonprofit? Like, we all went to an event this evening over at the Vets where we had hot dogs put on by the Santa Maria Noontime Kwanis. Did Kwanis have to get a health license or a business license or any license at all?
They do. They have to go through what's called a safe handlers' permit, and they get that through the county. The members of the club have to go through a course, and then they're certified as safe food handlers, and then they're able to prepare those kinds of public event types of thing.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Posada? Okay. Let's see. Madam Clerk, do we have any...
Written, no.
No one to speak?
No public comment?
No public comment?
No written.
No public comment? No written? Okay. So, go ahead, Ms. Waterfield.
Depending on the size of the parks, are we limiting how many vendors can go in there to sell their stuff?
We haven't had that as a problem lately. You know, usually, it's the individual going through, you know, one park at a time. We usually don't have too many issues where multiple carts. The only time we might have something like that would be if there's a larger group, like a soccer tournament or something going on, and then we'll see more accumulation of vendors. But for the most part, it's usually one or two at the most.
Okay. I can't even remember now. Did I close the public hearing? I guess I did, didn't I?
I'll close it again.
Okay. I opened it and I closed it because there wasn't anyone wanting to talk. So, do I have any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would move for the approval of ordinance number 2017-14 and continue the next reading and adoption, amending Title 10.
Second. So, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 2017-14 and put it over for the second reading at the next meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Hi.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Hi.
Councilmember Moats.
Hi.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. Next item will be a short report by our city manager, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Mayor Patino. Members of the City Council, your next city council meeting would be two weeks from this evening, be the 15th of August. We have one presentation that evening, and that's the Spirit of Santa Maria Ward that will be given to the local Elks Club on that one. We have a number of consent agenda items, highlighting a couple of them will be two of the second readings that we did on the items we passed this evening, the shopping cart ordinance, and also the recent permitting process in the city parks. We will have responses on a couple grand jury reports, and then we have an appointment to the Block Round Advisory Committee. We'll have two regular business items. One will be a conceptual review on a general plan zone change for a senior housing project along Blosser Road at Clark Lane. And then the other one is the fourth quarter financial report. So, that's a recap of the meeting for August the 15th.
Thank you. The next item is oral reports of council members, and Mr. Boyson, I will start with you.
Madam Mayor, and I'll be very brief. The only required reporting I have, I did represent the City Council in the city of Santa Maria at Central Coast Water Authority on July 27th. We are moving forward with negotiations between all of the member agencies with the ultimate goal of having the contract with the State of California for state water transferred from the County of Santa Barbara to Central Coast Water Authority. And I think all of the attorneys for all of the agencies have received the proposed wording, and they're still collaborating on getting something that would be agreeable. It's one of those things where all eight of us have to agree, or it doesn't go farther. So, keeping fingers crossed.
Are we having any pushback from certain people?
We haven't.
Okay.
We haven't yet, and I think that all the agencies have, how can I say this diplomatically, have expressed frustrations in the past in dealing with the County of Santa Barbara and would perhaps appreciate being independent of them for this particular item. So, we're hoping that we will get solidarity on this.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I spent all last week in Atlanta at the CATCA 2017 mid-year training, which was about opioids and marijuana. And this is something that I would really like the city to put on its agenda, to have a town hall meeting in regards to these two items. Very serious training. We had not only DEA, we had scientists, we had doctors that had scientific evidence, especially in regards to marijuana and what it does to the human brain and the falsehood of all the rhetoric out there that it's a safe alternative to medication. There were so many people, and if you wanted to ever hear the truth about the marijuana and the opioids, it's just amazing. Colorado, for instance, it gave a lot of stats on Colorado. There are more marijuana vendors in Colorado than McDonald's and Starbucks combined. And to see how the downturn of that state, especially Denver, has depleted so many resources there for thriving and tourism and all those great things that used to make that city great. There was this one speaker who has a whole team of professional speakers that will come to our area without any charge and speak to whomever he wants us to hear. And my choice would be have all of, not only city councils on the north, or maybe entire Santa Barbara County, the Board of Supervisors, but the school trustees, the college trustees, the children, the kids. 12 years old is the starting age, and that number is going down lower. The edibles that are coming out of this with the gummy bears and the way they're packaged and the cookies and everything you can make out of it, it's just alarming, and it's very, it's really scary. It's just such a myth out there, and we've just got to get, you know, to the bottom line, especially within the city of Santa Maria. I felt like I came out of there with such good understanding and knowledge that, you know, too much is given, much is required. And so, I feel I can't keep it to myself. We just need to get those speakers here to Santa Maria, get the professionals here that have all the scientific evidence of what it does to a human body and how we are using this for the dumbing down of America. And that's basically what it is, and it's just really sad. So, it was encouraging but scary at the same time. It was very intense training from eight in the morning till five in the evening for four solid days, and I'm just, I just want to shout it from the rooftops of what's really going on with this epidemic and how it is just going to destroy our country, you know? They looked at, you know, what's to look for in California, and it was such a grim report. And, but you can't hide the scientific truth, and they've had plenty of it there. So, I'm on board, and hopefully, we can get together and look at how we can have a huge town hall meeting with everybody involved.
Where was this at?
In Atlanta, Georgia. Yeah, it was just incredible.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Did anybody take a poll there, citizens of the state of Colorado, if they had the opportunity of doing it all over again?
Yes.
Would they vote for or against marijuana?
They would vote against it.
I mean, by big time or...
Yes, yes. They would absolutely vote against it, yeah.
Hey. Dr. Moats, you're on.
Well, like I was in Atlanta, I've been in New York City for the last 10, 11 days. I did have the opportunity to study the homeless as I was jogging through Central Park. But I didn't go on any official city activities, so I have really nothing to report on.
You didn't do any surveys?
I surveyed. You had some pretty interesting homeless situations there. But none that I have to report to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Mayor. On July the 19th, Mayor Patino and I met with the preacher...
Father Rolando.
Father Rolando at St. John Newman. We went there to explain some things to him that we thought he had received erroneous information on, and that being with regard to the mayor's task force. He seemed to me to be very open. We had Felix Esparza with us, and it was, I thought it was a warm meeting, and that he is ready to help us and work with us to further the causes of the mayor's task force intent. Tonight, just before coming to the council meeting, I was at the National Night Out over at the Vets Hall. Again, it was very well-staffed, and as I left to come to the council meeting, the people were, of course, starting to show up a little bit more, and I suspect we'll have a positive evaluation of that there. It was very well-attended, police department, fire department, ambulance people, radio stations. It was well-staffed. And that's all I have that's reportable, Mayor.
Thank you. July 19th, I had an interview with Molly from the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce. As Mr. Cordero said, we went to visit Father Rolando at St. John Newman Catholic Church. He's brand-new there, and we felt we needed to go there and let him know what the mayor's task force was about because he had a couple of representatives sitting at the table, and I don't think he was clear about our mission. July 20th, some of you may know Fran Forman retired from the Community Action Commission, or I guess is retiring, maybe at the end of July she retired. And I presented her a proclamation. Then on June 23rd, went to the conference, mid-year training conference. July 31st, yesterday, went to the grand opening of Congressman Salud Carvajal's Santa Maria Office, which opened, and it's on Thornburg and, I can't remember, it's 1,600 block of Thornburg. It's our community center.
Thornburg and Davos.
Yeah. And this morning, did the Ben Hayes Show. Mr. Hayden and I did the program at the Noontime Rotary, and then went over to Night Out, Veterans Memorial Community Park, which, when we left, there was more people coming in. There was not really ample parking. People were parked all over the place, more people coming in and families, and they were able to look at the agencies and resources that we have in our community.
Madam Mayor, I have one more.
Yes, Ms. Waterfield.
While I was out at that National Night Out, I ran into a gentleman that was part of the Junior Olympics water polo team that went and, for competition down in LA. They won the bronze medal out of over 70 teams, and they went up against San Diego, a lot of the coastal that have the big money to conduct, to train these young men. I would like to do a proclamation to the team, to the young team. These are 10, 11, and 12-year-old children who are so disciplined in what they accomplished, and to win the bronze medal just speaks volumes of what great little human beings they are and how they're going to hopefully conduct the rest of their life in that same lifestyle. So, I would like to request a proclamation to give them either at the next one or whenever, you know, maybe in September. So, if we can do that, that will be great. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Cordero.
I'm on the board with Fran Forman, and, believe me, we've lost an excellent CEO. So, Friday, I drove down to Santa Barbara and presented her with it again in front of the Santa Barbara crew, and said a few things about her and how I feel she was running the operation of CAC. Since then, I've gone back to Santa Barbara and interviewed several candidates for that position, and we're currently working on a couple of what I think are going to be great new eyes at the top level of CAC that will take, hopefully, one of them will take Fran's place. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. So, the City Council will now recess to a closed session. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title of the closed session item?
Yes. Conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Section 54956.9 of the Government Code regarding Dennis Chabansky versus the City of Santa Maria, Workers Compensation Appeals Board Case Number ADJ 9793220.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes tonight's council meeting. Good night.
Good night.